This meeting of the guests in City Council will now come to order. The chair is on calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles is absent today as well as President Williams, so our meeting is being chaired by President Pro Tem, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Echols is also absent today. Councilman Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to call on Shane Ellison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we're thankful for another day, a day filled with sunshine and good things. We thank you for all your blessings. We ask for wisdom and guidance as we continue to try to do your work to the best of our abilities. And we just pray for all those that are gathered here specifically for the leaders of our city. Pray that you give them wisdom and understanding and temper all our words. We just ask that you help us to do things that are pleasing to you and we just continue to ask your blessings on our city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee, Education Recreation Committee, Work Session, and City Council Meeting held on May the 26th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the accounts for the week of May the 22nd through the May the 28th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
Yes.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located 113 Hope Street in District 2 from R1, One Family Residence District to B2, General Business District. The owner wishes to market this property for office or commercial use. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Anyone opposed? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the Council will vote on this next week. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located 2213 Center Street in District 1, the state of Alabama, and Dennis Ray Christopher being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in March of 2013. We've actually issued three demolition permits to the owner. As you can tell from the pictures, very little has been done. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
We move to table it for seven days.
Second. Any discussion? There'll be no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
The next one's a public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1108 Whitehall Street in District 3, the state of Alabama, William D. Hudson and Howard B. Warren being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the resolution? Anyone opposed to this? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in December of last year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I haven't heard from the owner. I've moved to abate this nuisance.
Aye.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located 812 South 14th Street in District 5, the state of Alabama, and Maxine W. Tanes being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone opposed to it? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2013. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this
What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, it's in my district and I've not heard from anyone, so I make a move, a move that we abate the issue.
Second.
Are there any discussion? There'll be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located 2321 Clayton Avenue in District 7, Bankers Insurance Company, Jeanette Dodd and Frances Dodd being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone here opposed? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of 2013. There've been no improvements. There was demolition permit issued two years ago. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second. Are there any discussion? No discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located 2414 Lookout Avenue in District 7, Betty J. Yancey being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone here opposed? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in August of 2013. There've been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in August of 2013. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt, to abate.
Second.
Are there any discussion? No discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located 125 Robbins Circle in District 7, Joe Scarborough being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone opposed? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this property involves the old Mitchell Satellite School. We started our case in January of 2013. We've dealt with three different owners. There are no active permits. There've been no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Brian, is there, is there any way we can reclaim those bricks? I know it's, that's a brick building. Does it have any asbestos or anything like that in it?
Most likely it does contain asbestos as far as the brick material. Some bricks, if they're solid in nature, can be recycled. If they're the, your typical residential brick that have the holes, those, you can't salvage those, but that's something Public Works can look at.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with Bill Avery and Uptown Band. This is for a concert at Morten-Glosser Amphitheater to be held on Saturday, June the 13th, 2015, and the amount is $1,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with Daybreak Man. This is for a concert also at the Morten-Glosser Amphitheater to be held on Saturday, June the 13th also, and the amount is $1,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt it.
Second. Any discussion? This is a concert the city's putting on. It'll be June the 13th. We've got two bands that will be there, Bill Avery and Uptown Band also, the Daybreak Band. It's just something we want to do for the community.
The young folks.
And the young folks, Billy says. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution accepting conveyance of property at Adams Circle. This is a lot the city had conveyed to Habitat for Humanity in 2011. However, it is an unbuiltable lot. They've deemed, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Are there any discussion?
Yes, this is a lot over in Adams Circle that is, water just runs on it and it's just not fit for building a house on it and it's probably got an underground spring on it, so they're giving it back to the city. That's all this is.
Do we have any idea what we might do with this, Mayor?
The mayor suggested we have a rice paddy over there.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I think that's the first time in 50 years I've ever known the mayor to be speechless when we asked him something.
It speaks for itself.
The next one's a resolution authoring, accepting conveyance of property at 426 North 24th Street, that's in District 6. Owners in a nursing home, nursing home and they aren't able to keep up the property and therefore they wish to convey it to the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. There'll be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any new business? New business?
Yes, I asked for unanimous consent to adopt a resolution authorizing the agreement with Alabama Gas Corporation for the right-of-way acquisition on the South 11th Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in, those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, this is a part of the 11th Street Bridge that we have to have these right-of-ways to, to finish this bridge, replace this bridge down there. And from what the engineering department tell me, this is something we have to do dealing with the state of Alabama. Am I correct, Mr. Engineer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There'll be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, sir. I have another one. It also is a resolution authorizing agreement with Jennifer Fuller and the amount of $1,525 continued on the owner's acceptance of a right-of-way acquisition on the South 11th Street Bridge also. This hopefully is the last piece of property so that we can get this South 11th Street Bridge redone.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And move to adopt.
Second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business? That brings us down to department reports, committee boards. Do we have any today? We're down to citizens' requests. We have Curly Duramus, he wants to come and speak to us on Community Gardens. Mr. Duramus, if you will, state your name and address for the city clerk. You have five minutes, please, sir. I think we all know who you are, but just for the record, Eric.
Curly Duramus, 2202 East Broad, East Gas and 35943. I really want to clarify, and I'm saying my character, my trustworthiness. When I was told not to deal with the garden, I didn't go back out there. Paper stated about stuff that's already there. You know, the day I come up, I was really PO'd because I had worked out there about six hours in the sun with my passport. Tired, old, disgusted. Yes, so that's why, especially when you know you're doing something to help somebody. Mr. Gates, I believe is name, that I did give permission on that same day to do his planning. So to help him out, I didn't fool with him, call him because his wife was sick and she was so sick that the children told me that she had called it. So that's why I didn't fool with him. But I did talk to the attorney and asked him in that same time. They were talking about me, not him. And I wasn't expecting him to go because of his problems at home. So I think whatever he did has helped him even in his mentalness. Okay? So I want him to know that I apologized to him for not telling, but I had good reason for not telling him. Okay? That was one. Then we had the thing about when we do these meetings that the board said they would do, I would like for them to let people know that those involved can be there. Mr. Reeves said he tried to call me, but everybody from the city around knows my number, knows my name. Now they know I'm Curly Dogg, so I'm easy to find. Okay? So we got another meeting, I think, coming up next Tuesday, 2:30. So everybody in that garden area that wants to or can, come to that meeting. If you can't call me and I'll bust you up there. Because if I can spend $500 to see children go play football with the mayor, I mean basketball and they win, I don't mind busting. Okay? My thing is people, we need to start doing something, counsel, for people that don't have, even when we make ordinances, they are folk out there struggling even in business. I was there for 45 years. I caught hell in there too because I went to try to borrow monies and I had to sign a paper not to borrow anymore. Okay? So I know what it's like to struggle. That's why I try to help and do for people that I do do. Downtown yesterday, I could go all the way back to last Saturday at Cannon's house. Beautiful. Giving back is wonderful for, because if you think about where you come from, then you start giving back. I don't need the whole five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duramus. That brings us down to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor, would you like to go first?
I told Mr. Cannon I wanted to say a few words. He said, "You're not gonna make a long speech, are you?" Sometime I get on the soapbox, but when you have good news, I think everybody needs to know it because the good news never seems to get out as good as the bad news. But I'm gonna start off here with about three different studies. First of all, Forbes Best Places for Business and Careers. Gaston was ranked 152 out of almost 200. The only ones in the state of Alabama that were ahead of us was Auburn, Tuscaloosa, and Florence Decatur, and all three of those have major universities. So that was the good news right there from Forbes magazine. Then you have, from 2007 to 2012, we were ranked as one of the top 50 small cities in populations of 350,000 or less. We're number 41. Florence was 27. We're also in the top 20 southern cities at 15. Florence was number nine. Tuscaloosa was 20. We ranked 126 overall in economic and job growth. Ranked number two in 11 areas in Alabama, only following Florence, which again is a major university. And they also have a one cent sales tax, brings in about $30 million a year that they could use for economic development, which we don't have that. Number seven in prime workforce growth. The magazine pointed out most cities that did well in this category have major universities as well. We rank number two in Alabama in economic strength factors, following only Florence again. And we rank number one among metropolitan areas in recession busting factors. In other words, according to the magazine, this provides a measure of the area's resiliency during the recession. You know, we have been in a recession for quite a while and we're still not able to think out of it. But anyway, and this is important, our workforce development and career tech partnership with the junior college or community college, you know, we're training people. If you've got a good educated workforce or a trained workforce, then you can keep people moving here. You can expand several of the local auto suppliers are expanding right now. I think probably there's, I think Matt McCain told me around 400 to 600 job openings right now. So when people say they can't find a job, they can find a job. They may have to do a little training, but there's a lot of ways they can get that training. And then on this last one here, I'll sit out to the council if you want to. This is the best news yet. New manufacturing employment numbers have been released by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and they show Gaston is on the right track in our efforts to create new jobs. Here's a handout, which I'm giving to the council, and I'll go over these with you. As you can see, Gaston ranks number three in manufacturing employment growth in Alabama in 2014. We were number 70 out of 322 metro areas in the U.S. In terms of net new manufacturing jobs in 2014, we tied for the fourth position in Alabama and we ranked 142 in the U.S. And going down the list here, the rank in Alabama percent of employment growth, Tuscaloosa was one, Auburn was two, Gaston was three, Anniston was four, Montgomery, Mobile, Huntsville, Birmingham, Decatur, Dothan and Florence make the last 11. And then again, ranking new net jobs, Tuscaloosa, Montgomery, Auburn and Gaston, Anniston, Mobile, Huntsville, Birmingham, Decatur, Dothan and Florence. So when people say there's not much going on, there's not any jobs, there's not anything to do around here, and we have a lot of programs. You can go to the high school. We have a state-of-the-art career tech program there. And some people say, "Well, you know, I don't want to be in career tech." You can always get that training, go to community college and get certified, and now you can take dual enrollment. You can be taking those classes at the junior college while you're in high school. So when you go over there, you won't have to go there as long. And if you want to go in and get a four-year degree, you can always do that, but you got a trained skill. You can take anywhere. And probably you've heard me tell this story. The plumber was at the doctor's house doing a job and he gave the doctor the bill and the doctor said, "That's more than I make." He said, "That's, I know, that's why I quit practicing medicine and started plumbing." So there's a lot of good jobs. Career tech is not the dumping ground like it used to be where you go to shop and all that. It's high-tech. I mean, it really is. We have all kinds of programs. And I'd just like for people to know, we can hardly ever get the word out, but if you check things out and you want to do something, there's ways to do it. And it all starts in early school, in preschool. We, at the, most of the gyms that we own, where the elementary schools, we, they have an edge program. The kids pay $25 and they get tutored one hour after school from teachers. And then when they come to the gym, there's some kids always who can't pay the $25. Our Park Gym Rec takes them into the other part of, not the gym, but the school, and then they do study hall for a lifestyle and the parents pick them up at 5:00. But what we really need is from 5:00 to about 7:30 or sometime during the night, we need the parents and the grandparents and the aunts and the uncles and tutors and mentors, whoever, they gotta learn to read and understand what they're reading and do math. If they get into eighth or ninth grade, my wife is a counselor at the alternative school for the county, and once they get into seventh, eighth grade, ninth grade, they get embarrassed. They don't know what to do. They get in trouble. They get kicked out and they probably don't go back. We've gotta have more, you know, the city and Board Educate, we can only do so much. We gotta have, they gotta have reinforcement on what they learn in school at night. They gotta have it. And sooner we can get around and get everybody to understand that, we can make it even better. But there's a lot of opportunities if people want to take advantage of it or have the children take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to announce my community meeting, which will be June the 4th, Thursday, at Carver, Community Center at 5:30 PM. It's the first Thursday of each month and it just rotates from Carver to Thompson. And I also want to talk about the trash that was thrown out at North Knight Street and Avenue A. And I want to ask Mr. Harbison to come up and explain and expand on the process because most people think we could just go out and pick it up, but we cannot go on private property and pick up the trash. So, Mr. Harbison?
Councilman Worthy, the process is, just because you take something out of a house and put on the street for pickup, there's no guarantee that it will or can be picked up. Certain criteria has to be met. Public Works, and this has been stated multiple times, will not pick up building material. And if you've had a contractor involved or a tree surgeon that's cut trees, it's their responsibility for removing any debris left over from their work. This particular property involves, it looks like complete cleaning out of a residence. There was so much trash and debris, used clothing, building materials, furniture that spilled back from the right-of-way onto the private property. The city of Gaston cannot go on private property without a resolution from the City Council. And that's, I can testify to that. I've been standing here for 24 years asking the council for a resolution, primarily just to give us permission to go on private property, whether it's to rehab a house or remove it. And the same, same stands true for debris that put out on the street from that house to be picked up. My advice to the general public is make a call. All it takes is one phone call, Public Works, and ask them about the pickup of whatever it is you intend on placing out in the right-of-way. It will save you a great deal of time. This particular case that you mentioned is either going to end up in municipal court with a fine or could end up before the City Council, and that's the plan right now, or both. We will present this case to the council. If the owner or the responsible party connected to the owner does not clean this up, then the city will be forced to do it. If we clean it up on private property, then somebody's gonna get a bill for that. If that's not paid, then you're looking at a lien assessed against property. And that's, the lien itself is a negative mark against that property from hereforth. So I hope that answers your question. Don't put it out until you make that call.
Thank you, sir. And if you put it out, put a little bit out at a time. If you put a little bit out at a time, I don't think they have a problem picking it up. it up. But if you just dump everything out of your house, they're not going to pick it up. And whoever it is, I think the person died that owned the house, and someone has paid someone to go in and clean it out and dump all that trash out there. But you will not be able to rent that house or sell it, because the city's going to put a lien on it if we have to pick it up and look like we will have to pick it up. I've been getting so many calls on it, I've been out there several times, and we just cannot catch whoever's doing it. They moved one pile that was right in front of the garage to out there where the other pile is. And I mean, it's a big pile. And it's just trash everywhere, and the neighbors are really mad about it. So I just wanted to let people know, we cannot just go on private property and pick up trash. Hopefully, I think it's a 14-day process, correct, Mr. Harbison? So we are in the process of trying to get this cleaned up. Okay? And I also want to talk to you about the Community Cleanup Day at Carver, the first Saturday, June the 6th, at 8 o'clock. If you want to help clean up the neighborhood, just come on down to Carver. And they also will have first Saturday, starting at 1 o'clock after the cleanup. So come down and help clean up the community. And then I want to, if you want to laugh, y'all ought to come tonight to Gaston City High School and watch the Polish Department Basketball Team play the team and won. And we're going to be like probably the Washington Generals when they play the Harlem Gold Trials, because they're going to dunk on us and all kind of stuff. So y'all just come on down. I think the game started 5:30. And I will be playing, so if you want to come and watch me run up and down the court for about a minute or two, then I'll sit down. Thank you.
Councilor Billensley?
Yes, Mr. President. I want to emphasize what the mayor said. We went to a conference a couple of weeks ago in Tuscaloosa, and a lot of people ask, "Why do we go to these conferences?" You just learn so many new things that other cities are doing to solve their problems, and we can learn some of those things that will help us solve problems here. Most cities have the same problem. They just do, go about it in different ways of solving those problems. And that's what we're trying to do, is go and solve some of these problems, because we do have some problems. Our houses are probably 70 years old in this town. I mean, that's old for a house. And we just, we just have to figure out some kind of way to save some of these houses, if we can. But looking at the pictures of some of these that we had today, man, I don't think you could do anything to save any of that stuff. So we have to understand that it's a process that we have to go through as a city to clean up these areas. Because I know I've got a couple of houses in my neighborhood that, you know, they need to be torn down, because it's just rat-infested and drug-infested by people that are, sometimes don't have a place to stay. But we just have to consider all these things. And also, up at the falls, my wife and I just bought a travel trailer and we went on hiking for the first time. And there's just a lot of birds and trees out in the woods. And if you don't have something to do, you're just, you're going to be lost. But we have Nakalula Falls, and we went up there, and that is a wonderful, wonderful place. Got a bike trail up there and a walking trail. So if you feel like you want to get refreshed, go up and take a walk on the trail. That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
I'm going to tack on to what Billy says about the good news. In Tuscaloosa, they learned a lot from us, too.
Yes.
We're doing a lot of things here in Gaston that are right and good. So it was really, I enjoyed being there, learning from them and from us. Good news, I'm going to tack on to what the mayor said. This morning, we are blessed, or we have with us, two folks from Georgia, Amber and Bryce Jamison. They came to visit with us this morning. I believe that's Bryce, isn't it, Bryce? Where are you from in Georgia? What town? Clinton? Oh, Atlanta. Whoa. I'm from Gainesville, right above you there. Anyway, y'all, this is Gwen Bonner's grandchildren, and we're glad y'all came this morning, okay? We appreciate it. All right. Also, I was going to tell you, I want to talk about the new business on Wall Street. And you can follow up on it, but we do have a new business on Broad Street, uh, Wall Street. The gun shop, Jerry Rogers, is next to the Ritz Theater. They're going to have a lot of things in there, but the reason I'm saying it is, we have a new business in Gaston and on Wall Street that he has invested quite a bit of money and time to help or try to help Wall Street recover and come back. He's just one more. We have three or four businesses over there that are really thriving and coming back, and we appreciate Jerry, the confidence he's given to us in this endeavor. The other really good news is Buster and Curly at the Jazz on the Waterfall. I ain't never seen a hot dog that big in my life. I really hadn't. I want two buns next week if I can get all the thing together with it. But y'all, y'all got good music, you got good fellowship and good food, and I appreciate y'all a whole lot. It's every Monday, right now, 11:30, right?
11:30, 1:30.
Okay, at the Water Ball. Buster, tell them where the Water Ball is.
Water Ball between the Fifth and Indian Stadium, from now through September.
And tell them what the cost of all this is. Right on. Free. Free. I bet there were 40-some people when I was there yesterday. The place was full, the music was going, everybody was having a real good time, and I just appreciate it. I really do. Kay Moore, was anybody going to say anything about First Friday? Okay, I just was going to mention that First Friday is coming up. Kay Moore was here this morning, and I don't know where she is now, but anybody that's been to First Friday knows to enjoy that, because it's antique automobiles, good vendor food, good camaraderie, people up and down the streets. It's unbelievable. And again, like Buster said, it's free. We've got three or four bands that are playing on different corners from Third Street through Fifth Street. Good music. Good music. Free, okay? To me, it's like-
Concert. Amphitheater. Amphitheater concert. Nine.
Although, I really want to say this, we always worried about Riverfest. And Riverfest is great, but we have a Riverfest every First Friday, every First Friday on Broad Street in this town. It's very enjoyable, and again, it's free. But come on out, and just, if you haven't been there, come on out and test it. If you have been, come on back and renew the friendships that we got going out there. I didn't know about the amphitheater there.
Concert. I think it starts at nine, and I believe the group is called Funk Master. They were here before, and there's been a big demand to get them back. I haven't heard them, but they must be pretty good at something.
Must be pretty good.
Yeah.
Now, people that say there's not anything going on in Gaston, that's the good news. All you got to do is just listen.
That's right.
You know, pick you out one go. Hey?
And also, we were at the conference, people all over the state of Alabama know about First Friday. So it's very, very popular, and people come from out of town to visit us.
They do.
So be cautious to the visitors, please.
And anybody that didn't understand that, I can't talk real good this morning, but Andy will, and David will put it out so y'all know what's happening. Won't you?
Councilman Worthy?
Oh, yeah. I just want, speaking of free, I just want everybody to know that the Bill Avery and Uptown Bandit, to be at the amphitheater along with Daybreak is free. So please come out and enjoy it and support, support them, okay? Thank you.
I just want to talk about Saturday, District 6 cookout. It went really good. I appreciate Curly for coming to cook the hamburgers and hot dogs. He did an outstanding job. All of them was gone. Hey, you can't beat that when you give all your food away. Everybody enjoyed it. I thank the bands that come, I thank everyone that came. We just had a good time for a couple hours. Now I need to turn our thoughts to what I deem as cleanup in District 6. We've had a bunch of trouble in District 6, abandoned houses, overgrown cars, trucks, people's just been letting their properties go over there. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison if he'll come up to the mic and tell us how many cases that they've got so far in District 6 that we're trying to get cleaned up, and what's going to happen if you don't follow the rules in District 6, that you got a letter from, Brian?
Yes, Councilman Cannon, the Building Department just completed two, what we refer to as nuisance sweeps through the Walnut Park community and the Mill Village, and we sent out over 200 letters. These are, none of these are dealing with condemned houses. We've got over 60 in District 6 that we're proceeding there. But these are cases dealing with anything from one problem on the property to multiple problems. Anything from trash and debris to discarded appliances, either in the carport or in the backyard, or abandoned vehicles. And so we're going to continue these sweeps, and eventually we'll hit every neighborhood in the city.
I don't know, publicly thank the Building Department and Mitchell Troop and Brian Geer, all the people that's, who's, I'm sorry. Yeah, and I can, everyone that's been out there trying to make District 6 a better place to live. You know, if you clean up your community, I'm a firm believer, if you clean up your community, it'll be a better community, more people will come, it'll look better, we'll get more businesses in there. And that's what we're trying to get over, safer neighborhoods. You know, it just looks awful if you've got a washing machine in your front yard, if you've got a refrigerator laying in your front yard, if you've got a couch in your front yard. One guy over there had, I don't know if Brian M. seen it or not, had a car, he took his motor out of his car on the sidewalk and left his motor on the sidewalk. You know, that don't look good. You know, we got to clean up stuff like that. It's just, it just looks awful over there. Everybody, please bear with us and help us over there, and if you got a letter, abide whatever the letter says and do what the letter says. If you don't, you'll probably end up seeing Mr. Harbison or one of the officers somewhere else. That's all I've got to say, but I really do appreciate Jerry Rogers and the gun shop he opened up there and the trust that he has in Alabama City over there and Wall Street, trying to get everything coming back. We're trying to get the Canterbury Station up and running good again. We can get a grocery store up there very, very soon, I hope. Grocery store will be coming, and we're just going to try to clean up our neighborhoods and see if we can't get some folks over there that takes pride in their community. That's all I've got to say. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second?
We adjourn.[1764.76][1764.76][music]